Councilor Siomo. Councilor Edwoods. Councilor Sabby George. Council Flaherty. Council Flynn. Council Janey. Council McCarthy. Council O'Malley. Council Presley. Council Wu. And Council Zakeham.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I'd like all of my colleagues, all members and guests to please rise. Council Wu will introduce our clergy today, who will give our invocation, and after that, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, everyone. I am very excited and honored today to introduce Pastor Daniel Lamb, who is Senior Pastor at Vietnamese Assembly of God of Boston in the Fields Corner area. He's been there since 2011. He graduated locally from UMass Boston with a bachelor's degree in biology, and while working at the lab, he received a call to lead the church that he'd been attending since high school. He's bivocational, meaning besides pastoring at the church, he also works at the Broad Institute. He is media chair for the Vietnamese-American Community of Massachusetts and Director of Vina Media Production. He also tells me that he very happily lives in Fields Corner with his adoptive son. So, welcome Pastor Lamb.
Thank you for the introduction, and it's an honor for me to be here. First, I want to share with you a passage from the Bible, the 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, Verse 1 to 2. "First of all, then I urge that supplication, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we might lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way." Boston is a great city, and I've been living here for 20 years since I first came to America as an immigrant. I visit a lot of cities, but Boston is my home. And at church, every prayer meeting, we pray for the city of Boston. We pray for the government leaders, because we know that it's our responsibility to pray so we can have a peaceful life, and we love it here. And today, again, it's such an honor for me to stand here at the Boston City Council and pray for you. That is such a privilege. And so, let's pray. Oh dear heavenly Father and our Lord Jesus, we want to thank you for the grace that you give us through your Son Jesus. We ask you to continue to give your grace, your love, and your protection to the city of Boston. Oh God, we ask you to break the barrier of racism, to break the barrier of drugs, of violence, and bring unity to the city of Boston, oh God. And I pray that you will protect every street and corner of Boston, protect the law enforcement when they do their work, and protect the young men and women out there from making wrong decisions, oh God. But everything starts here. You give the city councilors the authority to change, to make changes. I pray that you give them guidance so they can create, they can pass or amend the local laws, or make any approval on the city budget with wisdom, with integrity, without judgment, and with loving heart. Bless them, oh God. Bless their family. Bless their children, and children of their children, oh God. And I offer this meeting into your hand. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Reverend Lamb, for your leadership in the community and also for your prayer and invocation today. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite up Council Presley for a special presentation. And while she's coming up, I do want to acknowledge some electeds in the room, including some former council colleagues. So, Council Yancey is present with us. Former Councilor Tito Jackson is present with us. Former State Senator Diane Wilkerson is present with us. Current State Rep. Andre Koval is present with us. And current Rep. Russell Holmes is present with us. I'm not sure where he is. So, thank you guys for being here today. Council Presley. Mr. Cooper and Gemma, would you like to join us? Mrs. Schillingford, would you like to come up? So, we have a full house, and many dignitaries and colleagues in service in the room, and many people from the community whose lives have been touched by this extraordinary human being. In addition to the elected officials that were recognized, I did want to also acknowledge someone who worked as hard as any elected official, and you know our aides at the marks of our office. I do want to acknowledge Mary Tuitt, a former senior aide to State Representative Gloria Fox. And then also wanted to acknowledge who was at the pre-reception, came right from the airport and hustled his way over here to pay tribute to this extraordinary man that Governor Duval Patrick was here earlier today. So, if we can just thank the governor. And I think Reverend Lamb's words and the scripture that he chose was so apropos as he spoke of a prayer of thanksgiving in Timothy. I do consider this moment in time where we are celebrating, affirming, and uplifting the many civic contributions of Clarence Cooper to the city of Boston to be our own prayer of thanksgiving. For his civic contributions, for his sweat equity, for his laboring and love for the upliftment and advancement of community, and also the preservation of democracy, especially at a time when our democracy is being dismantled all around us, that Clarence Cooper, an immigrant -- so, let us also affirm the contributions of immigrants to this country -- has played such a critical role on the campaigns and in the elections of so many. And also, as a carpenter, I think you would be hard-pressed to walk into any building in the city of Boston that does not quite literally have his sweat equity and DNA baked into it. And I doubt that there are many political offices that you could venture into that they do not owe their ability to sit in that chair and at that office to Clarence Cooper. As grateful as I am for his contributions, as inspired as I am by his professional hallmarks that have been trailblazing in their own right, which I'll speak to a little bit more when I read the resolution, I have to say what I admire most about him is the type of man that he is. So, I just -- his character, the type of husband he sets an example, being a father and grandfather. So, as much as we are uplifting the contributions of the public servant, what we are really doing today is honoring the man. And again, very apropos that Reverend Lamb was here today in his prayer, he prayed that as councilors that we would make our decisions and operate from a place of wisdom and integrity, sound judgment, and pure heart. That certainly sounds like the embodiment and the life example of Clarence Cooper. I do want to thank, I won't say his partner in crime, I'll say his partner in good, Mrs. Shirley Schillingford. I get to call two women of color Madam President. That feels great. The founder of the Caribbean Carnival, and the two of them have been partners in good for so long with the Caribbean American Political Action Committee. And so, I do want to offer her an opportunity to say a few words if she would like. Okay, all right. And so, we all really work for Mrs. Schillingford, if you didn't know that, so I had to just make sure that was what she wanted. But she initiated this reception and this moment to honor Mr. Cooper, so I do want to afford her the opportunity to say a few words. And then, we will read formally the resolution, have a quick presentation, and invite councilors up for a photo. And Mr. Cooper, you can also say a few words if you would like. Okay, all right. So, we'll have Mrs. Schillingford up.
Good morning to my elected official, I call them, and to our community, and to everyone who is here who took the time out of their busy schedule to be here, although I would not let you off the hook, you know, because that's just me. But I want to say that it has been a wonderful journey for me to work with Mr. Cooper. We have worked on many, many fronts. I mean, he worked the first time with Hubert Humphrey in 1968, and one of the highlights of our political journey was when John Kerry was running for election, and he was losing Philadelphia. And Mr. Cooper orchestrated this trip. We hired a bus, no expense to the campaign. We traveled to Philadelphia. We hit all the churches that morning, and then hit the subway and the streets and campaigned so that our senator would not lose that seat. And let me just tell you, he wanted 60%, so that was very good. The other thing was when Diane Wilkinson, our senator, introduced Duval Patrick to us, we were the first ethnic group to endorse him, and we have supported him his entire eight years, and no wonder he made the effort to come here this morning. I want to say that if we give the world our best, you have the opportunity that it comes back to you. And Mr. Cooper has lived a life of value and painted the pathway for all of us to follow. Many people have pathways that is easy, and you know, when it's easy, it's hard. But he has made it so that our pathway is very, very smooth. He has been an excellent mentor to the Caribbean community. He has been an excellent partner to me. I serve as his vice chair for CPAC, and we work on campaigns for all these years. I thank him for all his efforts. I know that there are many councilors here that can attest to the fact that we have worked tirelessly for you and continue to work tirelessly for you, but you know we will speak up when things aren't going right. And that's what friends do. We can talk to you like you're talking in a mirror, and you can praise you when you earned it. So, I just want to say thanks to my daughter, you know, for strengthening me along the way, and also thank the Cooper's family for loaning us, Mr. Cooper. And if you don't know it, Mr. Cooper has been the chairman for Councilor Charles Yancey for his entire political career. So, we have a history here. So, again, before I turn the mic over, I just want to say thanks to the Cooper's family for allowing us to utilize Mr. Cooper as much as we did. I know sometimes she doesn't even want to hear me calling all these hours in the night, but thank you anyway for allowing this. And thanks to our city councilor for making this possible. I am entirely, entirely grateful to all of you. Tim, thank you. Council Flaherty, we go way back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Schillingford. And so, although we don't -- I mean, there have been so many words already spoken, and we don't usually read every whereas, but Mr. Cooper has earned every single one. So, if you will indulge me, I will read the wherethes of this resolution that is offered on behalf of the entire city council to Clarence Cooper. And then, following the reading of the resolution, Mr. Cooper will say a few words, and then we'll invite everyone up for a photo. Whereas, Elder Cooper was born in Trinidad and Tobago in July of 1944 to a family of seven siblings. He migrated to Saint Croix in 1965 and came to Boston in 1967. He has been married to Gemma Cooper since 1978. Are y'all ready for this? He is a father of six, a grandfather of six, and a great-grandfather of two, with another expected in February. Elder Cooper began his dedication to public service in Boston on Hubert Humphrey's Democratic campaign in 1968, and has remained an impassioned public servant ever since. Throughout his career, he has worked on the campaigns of Duval Patrick, President Obama, Hillary Clinton, Elizabeth Warren, Charles Yancey, and many others. Elder Cooper joined the Union in 1970 and was promoted to foreman, general carpenter, and safety superintendent, and he served both positions dutifully until his retirement in 2006. He was elected to the Carpenters District Council of Boston and made history as the first black person to be elected to the Executive Board of Carpenters Local 67, the first and only black person elected to the Boston District Council of Carpenters, and one of the first black delegates to the New England Regional Council of Carpenters. Elder Cooper is one of the founding members of the Unity Sport and Cultural Association and served as president for 20 years. At this organization, he has held a senior luncheon for 35 years, the senior ball in partnership with B3, numerous parties for children, and over 25 years of cultural exhibitions. Unity has been a safe haven for over 50 years of community events. Elder Cooper has been the chair of K-PAC for 25 years, during which he worked and orchestrated numerous campaigns and forums. He is also the founder of the New England Cricket League -- I've never played that -- which now has 40 teams throughout New England. He is the co-founder of the Boston Carnival, which began in 1973. Whereas, Elder Cooper is a dedicated public servant and an ongoing contributor to the ever-improving city of Boston, we can never seek to duplicate this man's achievements and commitment to the community and to politics. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council and meeting assembled wishes to congratulate Elder Cooper, and that this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council, Andrea Campbell, attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the city of Boston, Maureen Feeney. Congratulations. All right, and I'm sorry, we do have one late addition to the presentations, and one of the mothers of our community, so I do not want to upset her by not acknowledging this. The Caribbean Foundation of Boston, sponsor of the Urban Community Homemakers Home Health Aid and Chore Services, presents this certificate to Clarence Cooper. In recognition of many years of commitment and loyalty to the Caribbean community, we thank you and wish you all the best. From Beulah Providence, the executive director. And there's also a token of thanks included, so.
I've never been a man who have had a loss for words. This morning, I have to search for them. Madam President of the City Council, Mr. Campbell, other members of the Boston City Council, all elected officials, past and present, and I'm going to say a special welcome to one past elected official in particular, is my friend Council Yancey and my friend Senator Diane Wilkinson. Ladies and gentlemen, all wonderful men and women in blue. I see some of my good friends from Matapan, B3, and other parts of the city who are here this morning. You came to recognize me, right? Who are here this morning. At least I forget, even though I might be repetitious. All the men and women of Boston, Unity Sports Club, the Carnival American Committee, the trade unions in Boston, welcome and thank you for coming. This evening, I feel so humble but honored that such a prestigious organization, duly elected by the people of the city of Boston, has seen it fit to honor me here this evening. Leaving Trinidad and Tobago 51 years ago, I never thought this would occur. I thought I would come here, get two jobs -- I got the two jobs -- make plenty of money, and run back to Trinidad and Tobago. But my friends, I've got to tell you, Boston has a way and means of captivating the heart of anyone who comes here to the city of Boston. So, after I came here, and I was here for about 10 years, I promised my mom I'd be back in 10. I said, "Mom, you have to wait 10 more." And I keep falling in love with this lovely city of Boston over and over. And my friends, I am here now 51 years, and I'm looking for the century when we'd all come and celebrate Clarence Cooper as a centurion in Boston. To those of you who live in Boston and don't know, leave, go live somewhere else for another six months, then come back to Boston, and you would see what you have been missing probably all your life. It cannot escape you. All the things Boston has to offer academically, intellectually, and of course, our wonderful places of medical institution, you must come back to Boston. But what has impressed me most in Boston is that Boston has created and continued to create opportunities for people like me who can come here, make ends meet, progress, and also to lend assistance to those in the community who need it. I came here, and the opportunity was presented to me to choose whatever lifestyle you wanted to make, or choose whatever line of business you wanted to get in. And I choose to be a carpenter, a proud one of the -- as that from the great old local of Carpenter 67. When I joined Carpenter's Local 67 in 1970, and I walked into the hall, there were six other people of color. I didn't let that deter me. I felt I was joining an institution that was even and equal to all its members, and therefore, I worked within management to ensure that people of color got their just due and right place in the Carpenter Local. I was so closely knitted to the members of the executive of Local 67 that when I walked in, they would call me Clarence Cooper, the Black Irishman. And that is a designation I took with pride because I can hit you one or two little old Irish songs that I learned back in Trinidad and Tobago. But we will leave that for another day. I woke my way up from carpenter who didn't know the difference between a two-by-four and a nail, and in six months' time, I was made a foreman. Never one day went to learn blueprint reading, but I was then promoted to foreman and general carpenter foreman. Some of the nicest buildings and tallest buildings you would see in Boston have the hallmark of Clarence Cooper. Not the nail that I knocked in, but when I hit my fingers too often, I couldn't find the nail. So, Boston permitted and gave me the opportunity to promote myself and thereby make a good living for my wife and my children. I, as Mrs. Schillingford and our council said before, the thing that makes me proudest is that I was able, with 14 other members, and I see one of the founding members here, Dr. Patricia, see, there's a stand-up doc. It's Unity Sports and Cultural Association, and some people may say the only party there. But we have got to provide in our places of business a place that young people of color can go and party freely without being harassed because they're doing it illegally. And I knew in the '70s, because we didn't have a unity and a place of business that people of color could go and party as their own, people were keeping parties in the basement, giving the poor policemen hell running behind them. Today, that is no longer a problem, and it has been cured because we have been able to secure building and been able to promote these functions for our young black people in the city. They need it. We must continue to do more and promote businesses like that on behalf of these people. Folks, let me see, two more things I just want to touch on a little bit because I know time is of the essence. The Carnival Committee, founding member of the Carnival Committee, an institution that has created a festival where over 700,000 people come to annually, spending thousands and millions and tens of thousands of dollars to be here. I also want to say one more thing on Unity Sports Club. We play a game that is called All Fours, that started in Trinidad over 100 years ago. It's a card game. And because we were able to bring something new into the game, this game has taken off from six teams in Boston. Now, every year, we have over 32 teams and dozens more trying to get into the Boston competition. But what is even better than that is now we travel to Trinidad and Tobago, the birthplace of All Fours, where they no longer have 10 and 12 teams playing in a tournament, but because of the ingenuity of Unity from Boston, they now have hundreds of teams and thousands and tens of thousands of people in these tournaments. And the nice thing about it is when we go to these tournaments, we get to promote our Boston. They don't say Unity is playing All Fours. They say the team from Boston. So, the Boston team and the name of Boston is well-known. Washington, Toronto, Montreal, Trinidad and Tobago, Florida, and all of these we have done as the members of the Boston community because we love our Boston dearly. Folks, let me close. I can say an awful lot, but my mother is watching down from up above, and she's saying, "Saga, take it easy. Don't talk too much." That is what my mother would probably say. But if my mother was here today -- no, let probably let me sum up my life to you. I have had the most wonderful life in the whole world, and it's because of the city of Boston. My friends, I was born and grew up a Trinidadian-West Indian. I came here and voluntarily became an American citizen, and I emphasize voluntary. I did that myself. I had choices to go other places. I picked America for myself so that I could become a citizen. But what makes me feel best is today, in the presence of so many Bostonians, in an institution of Boston, you are recognizing me as a Bostonian, and I thank you for that. Let me close with these words. My mom, she's pushing me in the back. She said, "Saga, don't forget to say this." Let me close by thanking each and every one of you here, and the best way my mom taught me to say thank you is this way. We thank you. We thank you. We thank you. We thank you, we thank you, we thank you. We love you, we love you, we love you. May God bless you, may God bless you, may God bless you. Stand up, Unity, thank you.
All right. So, so many people love Mr. Cooper, so we're going to invite Unity, I want to invite Councilor Yancey, Senator Wilkinson, if you would come up, and all of the councilors, and all of the elected officials that are in the House, come forward. We're going to try to fit everybody in here, okay? Now you move up, you're in the front. Stand right there in the middle. Okay, and here's your citation. Did you get, did you get the check? Put that in your pocket, okay?
We don't have, you don't have salary.
All right, who's going to count us down here?
All right, one, two, three.
on this governing body, because we have a meeting to get to, there is a reception in the Curly Room, so if you would make yourself, make your way there, people have put a lot of thought and planning into that. And then councilors, I suspect you might need some libation and sustenance at different points in the meeting, you can make your way there too. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Pressley, and thank you, Mr. Cooper. I'm now going to invite up Councilor Edwards for a special presentation.
I think so. Come on, come on. I just wanted to take this moment today to also honor one of our finest here in Boston. I'm honored to recognize A-7 Boston Police Captain Kelly McCormick, who went above and beyond in his role, I'll wait.
I know.
I'll wait.
We want to hear this.
Captain Kelly McCormick, who went above and beyond in his role as a public servant to assist a family in need traveling through Boston. On one of the coldest nights in January, Captain McCormick received a call that a family was traveling through Boston after their daughter was recovering from undergoing brain surgery in New York. Unfortunately, the family missed the train home to Portland, Maine, and was settling in to find a warm place to stay the night in North Station. Shortly thereafter, Captain McCormick arrived and alerted them that he would drive the entire family to another stop on the North Shore to grab the next train. The family soon realized in the cruiser that Captain McCormick's intention wasn't to simply drop them off at another train station, but was well on his way to driving them the full three hours home. Their daughter, Cory, was touched so much by Captain McCormick's actions that she went to social media in an attempt to make sure his actions did not go unrecognized. Her post received so many individuals, so much support that it was shared over 11,000 times, and was picked up by local and national media outlets. Captain Kelly McCormick is well-known in the East Boston community as a selfless, dedicated public servant who, in a quiet but valiant manner, wishes to evade the limelight or receive accolades. We are so honored to have you here today to give you the recognition that you deserve, Captain. So therefore, be it resolved, Police Captain Kelly McCormick, on behalf of the community, City Council, and City of Boston, we thank you for your steadfast dedications, commitment, and service to our community. Congratulations.
Madam President, City Council, really can't say enough, thank you very much for this honor. First person I would obviously thank is my wife, Kim, and my family who supported There's a sign in my office that says, make a small difference today. The only way I can go make a small difference in my 2,100 officers that serve for us is with your support, and it's the support of the mayor, the police commissioner, and this council, and what you do every day empowers us to make a small difference in the community every day, and that's all we ask to do. So I want to take the moment to thank all of you for all of your support to us. When you support us like this, we can do this job for you every day, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Invite our two, also our Boston finest from A-7, to come up and take a picture. Thank you, Councilor Edwards, and thank you, Captain, for your dedication to the city and for your heroic efforts, we really appreciate you. So now, now on to business. Approval of the minutes, if there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor, if you could read docket 0230 through docket 0232.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0230, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, statements of interest for their accelerated repair program for the following schools, the Rafael Hernandez School, Patrick Leiden School, Donald McKay K-8, James Otis, Josiah Quincy ES, Snowden International at Copley, and the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies in priority category for which the City of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Docket number 0231, message in order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for the collective bargaining by $134,957 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the FY18 costs contained in the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and the Boston School Police Patrolmen's Association. Docket number 0232, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $134,957 to cover the FY18 cost items contained with the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston School Patrolmen's Association. The terms of the contract are September 1st, 2016, through August 31st, 2017, and September 1st, 2017, through August 31st, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% in October of each fiscal year. The agreement also contains other benefits, including new steps filed in the city clerk's office on January 29th, 2018.
Docket 0230 through docket 0232 will be placed in the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0233, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept the amount of $30,000 in the form of a grant for the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Program awarded by the U.S., United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund surveillance vehicles for the Boston Police Department's fugitive unit.
Docket 0233 will be placed in the committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, would you like me to read from 0234 to 0237?
Thank you, that'd be great.
Docket number 0234, notice is received from the mayor of his absence in the city from 5:00 PM on Wednesday, January 24th, 2018, until 1:30 PM on Friday, January 26th, 2018. Docket number 0235, notice is received from the mayor of Michael Parker as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission for term expiring November 1st, 2019. Docket number 0236, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Esquire, Executive Office Officer for the appointment of Thomas V. J. Jackson to the Boston Retirement Board for term expiring January 15th, 2021. And docket number 0237, communication was received from Ronald W. Rackow, assessing Commissioner of the appointment of William Dodula as the Assistant Assessor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0234 through docket 0237 will be placed on file. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0238, councilors O'Malley and Pressley offered the following order for hearing implementing a curbside composting program in Boston.
Council O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I am extraordinarily proud of the efforts that this body has taken in regard to some really sound and effective environmental policy, and the point that I make every time we introduce and we talk about something new is that not only is oftentimes good environmental policy better for the earth, better for our planet, better for addressing the real effects of man-made climate change, but more often than not, it's also good for the taxpayer, it's good for the ratepayer. We did a pretty aggressive gas leaks bill that's going to save the $90 million that ratepayers in Boston are paying every year for escaped gas. You know, when we did Community Choice Energy, we talked about ways that we can increase our renewable portfolio while saving ratepayers money. The plastic bag ordinance is going to help indirectly save money from the tons of bags that go into our single-stream recycling every year. So the next logical step, which other cities have done to great success, is to have curbside composting in the City of Boston. Council Pressley and I are once again reintroducing this hearing order, I think this is our fourth or fifth time doing it, and I am ever the optimist that fourth or fifth time will be the charm, will be the charm. The city has done some good work in terms of Project Oscar, but there's a lot more that we can do, because in the United States, one-third, more than one-third, about 36%, 37% of our food isn't consumed, it's thrown away, and it's often ends up in our waste stream. Also in the United States, about a quarter of our waste stream is food and yard waste, and that is something that ends up in the landfill, that is something that we are paying millions upon millions of dollars just in Boston every month, every year, to remove, where it can be used in compost and done well, it's removing it from our waste stream, and it's going to be reused, it relies less on pesticides with chemicals, it's all natural, we can use this with our parks, we can use this with our playgrounds, farmers can use this, this is something that is done well, so, and done to great success. So, you know, San Francisco has seen a diversion of, I think, 60 or 70% of their food waste by offering curbside composting. Right across the river in Cambridge, we saw a piloted program in one ward in Cambridge, it's now been taking citywide. This is something that cities are doing. Again, there is an utter lack of leadership, a paucity of leadership in Washington, D.C. as it comes to combating climate change and putting forth effective environmental policy. So it's up for cities, it's really up to cities and towns to lead on this. This is a way we can do this. I foresee a piloted program at some neighborhood in Boston, I can think of one that would be an early adopter, but I'm sure other district councilors might argue, and I don't care where it is, but let's do this, let's start a piloted program this year. Let's have not only the big-belly recycle bins out with our trash in the trash, but let's have a new, smaller composting bin that can be picked up. There is no shortage of vendors that would jump at the chance for pennies on the dollar to work with the City of Boston to implement this. And again, it will divert trash, if we're serious about getting to zero waste, we have to embrace composting, and we have to get started soon. So look forward to, again, very grateful for my partnership with our good colleague and my dear friend, Council at Large, Ayana Pressley, for her leadership in this space. I want to see a hearing in short order, and really, now is the time that Boston has to lead as it relates to composting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Pressley, you have the floor.
Thank you to my, my good friend, District 6 City Council, Madam O'Malley, for our continued partnership on this initiative and for your steadfast leadership on all issues relative to the environment, and I do believe that Boston is well-positioned to make this type of natural next step in our commitment to reduce waste and our carbon footprint. We were speaking about Project Oscar, over the summer, we also saw that the City of Boston had put composting bins on City Hall Plaza, so we are making incremental steps, but we need to move with a greater sense of urgency because the very life of our planet is at stake here. I also wanted to add that what I love about this initiative that we first brought to the floor, I guess several years ago now, that it's another example of what happens when a community raises its voice. This idea came out of a State of JP meeting, and so I do think the best sort of symbiotic partnership between government and community is those efforts that are community-led and government-endorsed, and this is another such example of that. And then in closing, and I know it's very aspirational, but many of you have been a part of and supported my work to improve the quality of school food in Boston public schools, and after working for three years, we finally have a healthier vendor onboard, but those meals are still prepackaged, even if they are fresher and better quality, and continue to advocate for an upgrade in facilities and for every school to have a kitchen, but the goal here is ultimately to get to firm to school. And so as we transition to a place where more of our meals will be deconstructed and fresh and healthy for our students, I do hope that our schools will also be composting on-site. So that's sort of an aspirational goal that I just want to put out there, and again, I thank Council O'Malley for his partnership on this issue, we thank the residents at the State of JP many years ago for raising this issue, and we look forward to a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I first want to just thank the sponsor and the co-sponsor here. I may not look like a Harvard man or sound like a Harvard man, but I did go to Harvard last year for a hot minute, and one of the people that I met there actually ran New York City's compost program, and I was, I mean, I know to get to zero waste, we have to get to composting, but I'm sort of a hands-on type of person, so I'm asking, what does a barrel look like, what's the smell look like, all those things. We can get to a point where people are comfortable with this thought, I think. If everybody remembers in their backyards or their friends' backyards, or wherever you were when you were a kid, the composting, the rubbish bins that were set in the ground, we used to do this, we did this. We can't get to zero waste, like Council O'Malley said, until we sat at least talking about this, thinking about this, and my friend that I met at Harvard, did I mention I went to Harvard? I'd love some people to meet him, to go look at the operation, he's, he's, he's waiting for us, so thank you for doing this, and I look forward to the hearing, and sign me on.
Thank you, Council Baker. Thank you, Councilor Baker. Please add Councilor Baker. Please add Councilor Siomo, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Asabi George, Councilor Janey, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zachem, and the chair. And Councilor Edwards, you have the floor.
I just wanted to also thank the co-sponsors for this ordinance, but also note that this is not just about protecting our environment, but also helping economic opportunity in Boston. I've luckily been one of the folks who've been helping with CERO, which is a composting worker cooperative that works throughout Boston and really helps to recycle food exactly for composting for our parks and composting for our future. And so I just am so excited to see the city lead on this, and I hope that this will only help to bring about other forms of the green economy to help also compost and also partner with us to make sure that we're providing good jobs with a sustainable future. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards. Want to add your name? Madam Clerk, if you could add, Councilor Edwards. Docket 0238 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks. Docket 0239, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0239, Councilor Asabi George offered the following order for hearing regarding the annual homeless census.
Councilor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Madam President, tonight I will volunteer for the 38th Annual Homeless Census. The homeless census is a point-in survey, a point-in-time survey that helps the city collect data on families and individuals who are experiencing homelessness in the city of Boston. Over the last few years, I've joined hundreds of volunteers together, and we have walked through main streets, alleyways, and parks, hoping to connect with individuals and families who are sleeping outside. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the previous volunteers, hundreds, hundreds and hundreds, 38 years, and tonight's volunteers in advance for their work and their help tonight. I believe that we can end homelessness in the city of Boston. We have made great strides when it comes to chronic individual and veterans homelessness, but we certainly can't continue this work alone. We all know that homelessness has a solution. The solution is permanent supportive housing. We need to increase upstream prevention to keep people in their homes, we need to increase economic opportunities, and we need to pave the way for more affordable housing. And while we work on that, we need to continue, partly through this census, to collect the information that we need to help us do better. I look forward to this hearing and the information from the new census and comparing the trends over the years. Thank you again, and I hope all of you will consider participating, whether it's tonight or next year or the year after that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Asabi George. Anyone else like to speak on this matter or add your name? Please add Councilor Baker, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Janey, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Presley, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zachem, as well as the chair. Docket 0239 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0240, Councilor Campbell offered the following order for hearing to explore the possibilities of allowing non-U.S. citizens to vote in municipal elections and to examine other inclusive practices.
Chair recognizes Council President Andrea Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, I actually substituted a new hearing order, which you should all have. I actually substituted this hearing order, you should have new language on your desk. It's changing some of the language in the hearing order. So, say again? Oh, I'm sorry, a motion to substitute the new hearing order for the old one that was in the agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I think of immigrant, I think of hardworking, I think of sacrifice, I think of legacy, I think of first generation, I think of second generation. I think of my Aunt Marie from El Salvador, who cleaned houses and hotels, who birthed nine children, all of whom became successful and worked hard every day to ensure her children had more than she did. I think of my paternal grandfather, who came from Jamaica and sought a better life for his children. I think of the history of the city of Boston, including the Irish, the Italians, the Jews who settled here escaping war, poverty, oppressive regimes, and corruption, who sought, as we all do, more for their children and themselves. Immigrants who come to the city of Boston and who have come in the last few decades and are newcomers face many of the same challenges as the Irish, the Italians, and Jews who came before them. But they also face additional barriers. Additional barriers when it comes to immigration and pathways to citizenship. And these barriers are harsher and they're racist. These residents want to become citizens and are going through the process to become citizens, but the pathways that existed decades ago do not currently exist or they're no longer an option. So we are currently at a crossroads. As we continue to follow the news and policy coming out of Washington that seeks to uproot thousands of families by abruptly ending their longstanding immigration policies and seeks to pull in even our local agencies, including our school department, to be a part of this malicious plan, we have to ask ourselves, what are we going to do at the local level? Over the past year, this council has declared Boston a sanctuary city. We have been vocal defenders of our friends in the Muslim community, the Haitian community, the El Salvadorian community, of our neighbors. We have come out and stood up for their rights, we have advocated that their temporary protected status not be ended, and we have said that we have a problem with these statuses being threatened. I recognize, it's crystal clear to me, that we are not the federal government and that we do not have the authority to determine whether these communities get to stay here legally or be granted a pathway to citizenship. But I do think we have a responsibility as municipal leaders of this city to explore concrete ways we can include and support these residents in the city they call home. We can continue to go to rallies and marches and write letters and pass resolutions, but the question remains, what effect do they actually have? And what more, frankly, can we do as a city to not only protect this immigrant population but to empower them, to strengthen their community? This hearing order is just about that. It's exploring what else and what more we can do. I'm calling for a hearing, a conversation, to explore at the local level all the possibilities for greater civic, social, and economic participation for our immigrant population, including the possibility of allowing Boston residents with legal status who are currently seeking a pathway to citizenship to vote in our municipal elections. These residents include legal permanent residents, these are holders, TPS recipients, DACA recipients, and they've made tremendous contributions to our local and state economies. They pay taxes, and they serve in our militaries. According to a census report, there are currently over 190,000 foreign-born residents in the city of Boston, roughly almost 30% of the city's population. And an estimated 106,000, over 50% of that foreign-born population, include legal residents who are here seeking a pathway to citizenship. According to the Boston Planning and Development Agency's Boston By the Numbers 2015 Report, these residents generate over $3.4 billion towards our local economy, $2.3 billion to the region's gross domestic product, and have paid over $115 million in state and local taxes. When our nation was actually founded and our constitution first written, one did not have to be a citizen to vote. The law said that if you lived and paid taxes in a municipality for a substantial period of time, and at that time you were a white adult male, you could vote, regardless of whether or not you were a citizen. What they looked at was whether or not the residents who lived in those communities, who lived in those municipalities, shared interests with their neighbors in the policies shaping their community. They looked at whether or not they were participants. Municipal government is about keeping our streets clean, plowing, maintaining our parks and community spaces, providing the best education for our kids. And this, I think, directly affects all of us who live here. If we say we're a city and a nation of immigrants, then let's find a way to recognize and amplify the value of their contributions to our community. And let's at least, at a minimum, have a conversation. This isn't an ordinance, this is a hearing order to have that, a conversation, to explore adopting policies that provide these hard-working residents with an opportunity, and just that, an opportunity to participate and be included in the governance of their community. Other municipalities in the Commonwealth have already begun exploring this idea, and some municipalities around the country have actually adopted this and currently allow immigrant residents with legal status who are seeking citizenship to participate in their local elections. This isn't about state and federal elections, this is about local elections. This hearing is an opportunity to explore the ways in which other municipalities have increased access to government and its programs for immigrant populations. That may be voting, or it may not be. This is the beginning of what I'm sure will be a long and complicated conversation, and I've already heard from some folks, and thank you for your feedback. And I welcome all perspectives and ideas as to how we can build more inclusive practices for these populations of folks who live in our city. According to the Haas Institute, I think I want to define inclusivity. Inclusivity is realized when historically or currently marginalized groups feel valued, when their differences are respected, and when basic and fundamental needs and rights relative to those society's dominant groups are met and recognized. These inclusive practices and policies could include voting. They can include immigrant wealth and asset-building strategies, entrepreneurial supports, ensuring our students at BPS, for example, are protected from ICE, intentional efforts to bring newcomers and longtime residents together, rewarding companies that create spaces and welcoming environments. They can include multilingual communications campaigns that tell immigrants that we value them and their contributions. I think they're many-fold, and this hearing is an opportunity for us to have the conversation. I think we have a unique opportunity to take bold actions this term. I think we have to be proactive and not merely reactive to what's happening in Washington, D.C. I think we need to test out ideas and initiatives. And my hope is that this hearing is the beginning of a conversation that each of you will join, that the administration, the nonprofit organizations, the activists, and the community will support, and that it will ultimately lead to some productive ideas in all ordinances. Since introducing this idea, I've already listened to feedback from many sides, and I've even adjusted the language in the hearing order to be more clear, to specifically call out who I'm talking about. I'm talking about longtime residents who live in our communities and have for, say, 10, 20, 30 years, who currently have a legal status and are looking to become citizens. But frankly, through no fault of their own, the inaction in Washington is keeping them from realizing that. So they're here, and we have to deal in the space of reality. So what are we going to do to support them and to empower them? Lastly, I'll say, our mayor has been an outspoken supporter of the immigrant population in the city of Boston, and I want to thank him for his efforts thus far, as well as his administration and the Office of Immigrant Advancement. I want to thank him for his leadership. I look forward to him and his administration joining this conversation. I want to thank each of my colleagues as well for your immediate feedback, and I want to thank my team and my residents in my district who fight the fight every single day on the ground, consider me a partner in this work, and let's get to work. And thank you guys for indulging me today to go a little bit longer. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam President. I rise to ask that my name be added. I think it's very important that we are looking at all opportunities to encourage people to participate in our civic process, especially folks who are living here, who are long-term residents, who in many cases who have children in our public school system and have a, I can't think of a more vested interest in voting in local elections and participating in our civic life than having children in our public school system. I know that's something that other communities that have examined this have looked at, that making sure it's part of the school enrollment process and engaging people that way. I'm always excited to have conversations about ways we can increase participation in civic life, so I want to thank you, Madam President, for bringing this forward. I think it's important that we look at folks who have been here and have legal status of some of the enumerated kinds that you listed in the hearing order, to participate more fully in our civic democracy and our local democracy. So look forward to a hearing, and look forward to hearing from our colleagues, the community, advocacy groups, and let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Chair recognizes Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Madam President, for putting forward. I appreciate your leadership. It is timely, it is necessary. Thank you for your thoughtful and impassioned words, and also for providing an important historical context. And finally, I think that what you are putting forward today and are having honored Clarence Cooper earlier today is in stark contrast to last night's State of Reunion. And as you said, that many of us have, in solidarity, attended and participated in rallies and put out very strong statements, but at this time, we need to be leading. These beloved immigrants who are making contributions in community and in civic life and to our economy every day are looking to us to lead, and so I thank you for initiating this important conversation, and I certainly would like to have my name added. And then finally, to your point relative to inclusive practices, I do hope that we continue to be on path in the adoption of the municipal ID, which is also an inclusive practice, to support our immigrants in more effectively navigating this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you, President Campbell, for bringing this forward. Supporting the people of Boston has never been a question in this chamber, and I hope that never changes. But voting is a U.S. citizen privilege, it's our ultimate privilege. And I, for one, will continue to fight to make sure it remains that way. So I'll be at the hearings, I do not wish to sign on. I appreciate the change in language, certainly, and I'm all about conversation. Some people say I converse too much, but again, I go back to my original statement, it's an ultimate privilege for a United States citizen to vote, and I intend to continue to fight to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards.
Again, I want to appreciate our President's leadership on this particular issue. It impacts so many people in my district, especially those in East Boston. And while I completely agree that there is an ultimate honor in being a U.S. citizen and having access to the right to vote, I want to be very clear that there are so many laws that impact that right, that in many cases, it is worth the robust conversation. We have many people who are denied the right to vote due to having been in prison, we have many U.S. citizens who are currently in prison who cannot vote. All I'm simply saying is the conversation that you are trying to have and will have is necessary, and I'm so happy that you're putting it out there. I also want to be very clear that there's already been expansion beyond immigration status for voting right now. In Cambridge, we have participatory budgeting. We also have that for kids here, when they're voting on certain budget items. So we did not look at U.S. citizens' status, we didn't even look at age at that point. We were letting people lead and have a voice. And if that's the goal, then I wanted to say thank you so much for having that conversation. I do, I heard a lot of feedback as well with regards to who this would apply to, but again, if U.S. citizenship is the key to the vote, and we have an administration and lack of leadership on both sides that is denying U.S. citizenship to people, then it is our job as local leaders to figure out a way to make sure people have a voice. And I think that this is what this ordinance is doing. U.S. citizenship is being denied to folks who have been here for years, who have TPS, who have DACA, who are just as American as the rest of us. So again, this conversation, I'm very excited to have it. I will say also in certain points, I think I disagree with some points of how this will be implemented, but conversation is what we're here for, leadership is what you are clearly demonstrating, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Docket's...
Oh, yes, I want to sign on.
Okay. Please add Counselor Edwards' name, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor Wu. And docket 0240 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, personnel orders.
Docket number 0241, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Janey.
Counselor Janey moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0241. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0241 has been passed. I am informed by the clerk that I think there are zero late-file matters to add to the agenda. So I'm going to move on to the green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the two late-file matters are...
Seeing and hearing no objections, the two late-file matters are added to the consent agenda. The Chair moves at this time for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. At this time, I'd like all guests and colleagues and counselors to please rise as we begin to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, John Pontazalis Jr. For Counselor Siomo, Ann Marie Simmons. For Counselor Janey, Eloise Bell, Ron Bell's mother and former Counselor Jackson's aunt. Counselor O'Malley, Carol Ryan. Counselors Flaherty and Flynn. Donna Agricola, Marion Farina, and Ryan O'Shea. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, February 7, at noon in this chamber. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.